Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Present.
Here, Ms. Davis. Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon. We will start with the discussion items, Madam Mayor Potem, after invitation.
All right. Councilman McDowell, will you do us the honor?
As pray. For the beauty of this day, we simply say thank you. We thank you for the ability to move about without hurt, harm, or danger befallen us. We say thank you for this city of ours. Lord, we would simply ask that you might sensitize each of us. Allow the winds of the Spirit to blow as brisk and as cold as it is today. Allow the Spirit to warm us in such a way that we might sense your presence. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Good afternoon.
Well, you act like you've done that before.
Thank you, Reverend McDowell.
Yes, ma'am.
Reverend Councilman McDowell.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, sir. Our first item for discussion is the zoning map revision. Ms. Krista Hampton, Planning and Development Services Director, and Ms. Rachel Bailey, our zoning administrator.
Hi, ladies.
Double trouble.
And we are just going to give you all a quick update on the status. So as you know, the new zoning and land development ordinance, the Unified Development Ordinance, was adopted in August of 2019. And you all set a future effective date. And you set that future date so that we had time to do the remapping. Because in that new code, we established new zoning districts. So all of the districts are changing. A lot are staying very similar, especially the residential districts. But we are having to remap the entire city. So that's the process we're going through now. We're also going to be coming to you all, most likely in March, with some of the revisions to the actual text that you all adopted, and just some corrections of Scrivener's errors, and just some corrections we've noticed just since the text was adopted. Nothing major, but those will be coming to you all, too. So, and this is just to give you a rundown of the new districts. So there's nine residential districts. And again, they're staying pretty much the same. In some of them, there's a little more flexibility with lot coverage, for example. But other than that, the single family is definitely, single family more so than the multifamily is staying very much the same. We have mixed-use districts now, so it's not just all general commercial or nothing. So we have, it kind of goes from low-density and mixed-use and up from there. And we have a lot of activity centers and corridors to go throughout the city. We have institutional districts, which would take over. We have like the Fort Jackson District, the Riverbanks Zoo District, and then just some for large medical campuses in the university. So, and then we have just our industrial zoning districts. So those will be shown clearly on the draft maps that we are in the process of preparing for you all.
What's an employment campus district?
Employment campus is more of a techie industrial campus. So that one was developed when we did the Rosewood Plan. Steph created that out of that plan for the area down around the airport. So it allows for kind of a mix of employment office-
Spine road project.
-as well as light industrial, kind of clean tech industrial. So here is our proposed schedule. And really, we want to let you know what this is and get your feedback on it. And we are finishing up the, I would say, arduous work. We are having to individually touch all of about the 46,000 parcels that are in the city and remap them, rezone them. So we, as staff, are doing that. I must say that GIS staff facilitated that terrifically with the tool. So it would be a lot more difficult if it weren't for them. Shout out to GIS. So, and the schedule affords a number of opportunities for public engagement. We have two public meetings, your kind of conventional meetings, set for March and May. But one thing we're eager to implement with this is one-on-one meetings. When you have a zoning text, you can have a public meeting and everybody gets that information. When you're starting to put something down on a map, people aren't as interested as in the whole map. They want to know what it means for their property or their neighborhood. So instead of just having a meeting and showing the map, we're taking a cue from FEMA when they did their revised flood maps and offering 15-minute increment meetings, one-on-one with staff. So that will be both at city offices, and we will go out into the community, into the parks and libraries, to have opportunities for people to ask questions about what it means specifically for them.
Krista, would it make sense for you all to go out to the major real estate groups and have them call, you know, their agents or whoever, all into a room and kind of pitch them in 30-minute increments or something? Because you get a lot of impact and a lot of feedback quickly in that type of setting. And, yeah, I think you'd make a bigger impact and get more feedback in a more timely manner.
Certainly, yeah. We could definitely do that. And that would be in addition, because, you know, we want the homeowners or such and be in the communities and get their input as well. But that's a, that would be a nice bang for the buck to get in with them.
Put up a big zoning sign, but just put that you all are having meetings. And then you'll get a big turnout.
Yes, yes.
Krista, now will that, if we do that, that will be within that window we're talking about for the two meetings? Or somewhere in between?
So we'll have the public meeting. We'll publish the maps a week or so in advance of the public meeting. So everybody has an opportunity to see that. And that will be through our GIS tool. So they can be prepared, if they need to, to come to the public meeting. The public meeting is going to be more about, this is our process. Here is the larger map. These are what the zoning districts mean. But then, for the next two weeks, is when we will have those one-on-one opportunity meetings, both during the day and in the evening. So there will be a two-week window after that public meeting for us to have those meetings. Because then what we need to do is go back, revise the maps based on public input, as you can see, and then have another set of public meetings and another set of one-on-one meetings with the community after that. Then during the summertime, you know, we don't want to have too much going on. At that point in time, we'll be gearing up to go to Planning Commission in August. And we would be coming to you all for a public hearing in September. During that summertime, we'd be, you know, we have to revise our forms, revise our computer software applications and all of that to implement the new zoning districts. So this would put our effective date for the new code, hoping that we get a second reading in October, for November 1st. So two rounds of public meetings, one-on-one meetings after each of those. Really, just wanted to make sure, get your feedback on some of that. We'll also have an opportunity to have the We Plan Together website, which we've had from the beginning. Comment through that if people just don't want to or unable to come to the office.
I've got a question for you, Krista. So let's say there's residents on a major thoroughfare that we have tagged as future commercial with this changeover. Will they have the option to stay as their current residential zoning or opt into the overall master plan for that corridor?
So for corridors, generally speaking, I mean, we are not making wholesale changes from residential to commercial-
That's not happening.
...generally speaking. I mean, there may be a few parcels, but we, and, you know, we've got one that may be coming up here soon that we will definitely look at the map and see what the discussion is. But along the corridors, if it's residential, it's going to stay residential. The only place where we may see a change is if there was a specific neighborhood plan, of which we don't have a lot, that get that specific, that called for it to be changed over. And that was vetted and approved and then adopted by council. But otherwise, without that specific policy guidance, I think it's pretty rare.
So property owners aren't going to be surprised by this new overlay that we're going to do?
We hope not. And it's a full-blown new base zoning district for a lot of these. And with the new zoning ordinance, what we have found is, for the commercial districts, it affords usually more flexibility and more rights. So, for instance, for along a corridor, if it was just a straight commercial district, and now we have mixed-use districts along those corridors, you can have both commercial and residential.
And where do the height restrictions come in?
Those are within the zoning districts. So those change a little bit. So instead of a blanket 75 for all of our commercial districts, you'll see it changes anywhere from 50 to 60 to 75 to 100. And then, of course, we have our unlimited districts, which we currently have in the central business district.
Thank you.
How do you treat an application that comes in now? Are you putting them under the new map or are you still using the old criteria?
We are using our current zoning map and ordinance until the effective date. And the great thing about the ordinance is it has a transition period. So it allows you, within a certain period, to either use your current code or the next code. So there's provisions in the ordinance to address those situations. Well, as we move through this process, you know, I'd love to get your feedback, input, and we're both excited and a little nervous about this process, because it's a change, but it's something that we certainly need. But welcome any feedback.
Krista, Rachel, I'm sorry. What was your answer to Mr. Rickman's questions regarding specific individual meetings?
Well, with brokers, we're happy to host those. And that could be what we could do in that two-week period, is block off two hours that we just invite those groups.
If I could just use the list that you have for the brokers and the engineers? When you all did that little roundtable?
Oh, the engineer, yeah. But if, you know, our goal is to get the word out and do it efficiently. So if we can get more of those folks in a 15-minute one-on-one, it would be helpful. Anything else?
Yeah, you hear up?
I attempted about a week ago to kind of explain the process we're going through now with redoing everything. Touched on zoning. And I don't think I did a good job. In addition to maybe talking to the development folks, if there's an area or a neighborhood that has an interest, a special interest in that, would you guys be amenable to maybe coming and talking with them?
Certainly, yeah. We obviously can't go to all 100, but-
Right, right, right. Because I did indicate that, you know, with Compus, it's all there in some form or fashion. This, I think, is more intricate than what will probably come out of the, some of the session that we have in now.
And I went to a few neighborhoods when we were going through the text phase. So, I mean, I'm always happy to, again, we can't hit every single neighborhood. But I went to Earlwood, for example, to talk about the text and the big changes, especially in residential areas. So, I mean, I'm happy to go talk to them about the maps as well.
Can you draft a simple summary paragraph for us to soak in for our Rotary Club tours?
Sure.
You don't mind?
Yeah.
And we also will be having a frequently asked question on the We Plan Together site, too. So we'll make sure to shoot that to everyone.
Great, thank you.
But a summary paragraph.
Krista, is the We Plan Together site, is that easily linked to our website? Like, sometimes it's a little difficult to find things on our website. But just to make sure that people can, if they want this, that they know exactly where to go to see it.
How would you come up with that on the session?
I'll blast that out tonight. I'll give it a boost.
You'll like it. It's going to take them four days.
You can like it.
I can like it, that's right.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I thought we had two more hours.
Sorry. I wanted to gear you up for a really long topic. Pleasantly surprised.
Okay, so our next item, just a little bit of intro, is the Commercial Corridor Redevelopment Plan Final Recommendations. So I say that with a little emphasis, because I do hope that after today's discussions and a little bit of feedback from council on timing of implementation and duration of the pilot of this plan, starting in five points, 24 months or 36 months, we just need to nail that down from you all as well, that we can move forward. I've, you know, reached out to Mr. Rickman, Mr. Brennan in particular, just because of, you know, the way the conversation started. And Mr. Brennan, of course, representing the area, wanting to make sure that we, you know, are good to move forward with our recommendations. And we are, from their standpoint, of course, just for all of council's edification. But, of course, we've heard different feedback from just kind of chatter in the community, merchants and/or residents, about the different approaches to the plan. So at this point, this is what we got. We've done a lot of due diligence on this, on the staff level. And we're at the point where we're ready to move forward, if you all are. So we're going to take you back from the beginning. We're going to show you some really slick marketing materials that the staff has put together and seek your direction. Thank you. Okay. Ryan?
Ms. Wilson, I will say, as Ryan's coming up, because Ryan and Kay have been doing a lot of great, I know specifically LinkedIn, I've seen it. I don't know about other places. But I think it's been very well-taken. They've been doing advertising on the vacant buildings on LinkedIn.
Yep.
And I think that's a very effective use of social media to push this, what we're trying to do down there.
Yes, absolutely. And Melissa Lindler and OBO, I mean, they've been walking the streets and all kinds of good stuff. And as well as Columbia Water, in particular, Planning and Development Services, they're all going to jump in throughout this presentation to just give you updates on each item. And we, I mean, we are definitely wanting your feedback today, though, so we have- so we have clear insight on how you want us to move it forward. Thanks, y'all.
So what we've done with the original 10-point plan is put together a marketing piece that I can show you after this that can be lived digitally. And so it's a flip-page brochure. We thought that doing digitally is going to allow us to adapt to the changes that we'll see in the neighborhood and in our city as well. And in the first part of the presentation, you'll note that we've done an overview on Columbia. We prepared this piece with brokers, commercial brokers, investors, developers, people that might be looking into our city to develop in mind. So somebody who's not from here would want to know this information that we put together on the first part of the presentation about Columbia. And in an effort to save time, we're just going to kind of breeze through the Columbia information. If you have questions about it as we go through, though, feel free to ask. And then we'll delve into the incentive section, which is essentially where we've implemented the, what started as a 10-point plan recommendation for the Five Points area specifically. So we've got our content. We tried to use language that was appealing to all audiences in it and kind of drew them in and got them excited about our city on the things that we've chosen to say. So we have the Columbia overview, the Five Points overview, and the incentives. Since it's a flip brochure, you'll see pictures on either side. And I tried to staple your booklets together so that that's how it'll live digitally, online. So as you click the pages, it'll look like that. The other thing that we can do with the digital version, once we get into the incentive section, is do direct links to, if you want to download the application or do something like that, so that it's very user-friendly and business-minded.
Dartoff is more of a traditional economic development brochure. Can we get into some of the anecdotal things? Talk about the industries one would generally see in Columbia.
And back on the target industries, you'll notice with the launch of our new website at the end of February, those are specific industries that we're going to be targeting. There's a few others, but we put the ones that are, were most pertinent to this piece to be included in here, and a little blurb about each one and the types of businesses that we have in those areas. Obviously, we're known for tourism. We've got a plethora of higher education. We talk about all of our universities, as well as USC in this section. We have an area of things to do. These things are all important in this piece, particularly if you're thinking about Five Points and selling our city to somebody who would want to be looking to have a business here. Now, we're going to start into the Five Points area. It's an area overview. A lot of this language was actually taken from the Five Points Association. It gives the history of the neighborhood. And then it talks about how today it's a vibrant retail and entertainment district with shopping and dining, galleries, entertainment, and nightlife. We've created a map. This map actually took a lot of work.
To express how much fun this particular part has been.
And there's also another map that Five Points has that's not updated right now, but they have intentions, the association, to update. Once they have their updated version, we can probably work collaboratively with them on this. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't just put a map in here of all of our available properties. We wanted the person who was viewing this document to be able to see that there was lots of other businesses that are flourishing in the area. And we broke it down by business types. We have dining and entertainment, retail and shopping, services, residential, and parking. And we tried to highlight with a little hot pink, so you could see where our parking is, underneath our parking P, and just kind of give someone a flavor for the types of properties. And then at the bottom, on the right side, are the actual available properties. And when I spoke to you before about being able to link to information, when this lives digitally, you should be able to click onto it. And we're going to have a GIS software program on our website that would shoot them the exact information on square footage, type of use, things like that, that someone who would be looking for a space might need.
Those properties right there are all properties there?
That those are the current available properties that we are aware of. Some of those are listed with commercial brokers. Some of them have little signs in the windows that we found. So it's not an easy tracking. The best way to track it is to get out, walk through the neighborhood. And so that's what we've done with the Office of Business Opportunities. We've gone on hot days, cold days, all different kinds of days, trying to track that. In the rain, too, yes.
And it'll be dated, so... But I mean, I guess because of GIS mapping and it being a living, breathing document or tool that individuals can use, like, right now, you have as of January 2020, but daily, someone should be able to know with pretty much accuracy if it's available.
There will be three ways to see the available properties. This will obviously live in the document, and we will try to keep this relatively up-to-date, although, you know, it could be once every quarter. And so because that's digitally online, you know, we can make those adjustments as quickly as possible. The second, we'll be directing to the Five Points website. If they're maintaining their list of available businesses in any locations there, that'll be an avenue as well. The third will be the GIS software. Now, we're licensing some of the data from Henry Moore and his local company, Resimplify. We talked with you all about them last year. They do kind of the same thing that CoStar does. So as somebody with Wilson Kipler or Colliers goes in and updates that information that a property is coming on or going off of their commercial roles, it will kick that information over to our site selection data on our website. So we will always be, the things on the Economic Development website will always be current and up-to-date with what the commercial real estate brokers are putting out there locally as well.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Henry's company aggregates all that information? Is that what he does?
Is there a way that we can show the developable pieces?
Are you talking about like the larger tracks?
Yep.
We could.
For potential, because that's where the height, the height can be. And there are other opportunities, and, you know, there's...
That's good. Property owners to buy in on that, right?
Well, some of it, they, some of them already have.
Right, right, right.
I mean, you know, I'm saying, want somebody to come and partner with him to redevelop his site. His site's a step-up site, which is perfect for retail in the front, higher use on the back.
Yeah, we would just color-code it the same way we kind of did the parking and outline the parcel or parcels, and then add that on the map with a dot as a development opportunity and try to pitch those, you know, either together or separate.
The properties that are not on, you have three categories. Those that are advertising on their own, your list, and the other. What about a, an owner that's not advertising? Is that because they chose not to, or?
Right, and so actually, on some of these available properties that we have listed, the Green Street addresses, that particular owner does not have a commercial broker. We've been in contact with that owner and gotten information ourselves and have added it. And we try to do that where we can. It just makes it a little harder because if they just put a sign out and they don't let people know. But that also is a way that we can have good communication with the neighborhood, and hopefully they'll help us as well, but...
But everybody has an opportunity to be a part, yeah.
That's right. And if, you know, if you guys were to run across to someone and you were speaking to someone and they have a property down there that we didn't have listed, please let us know. We're happy to try to help get it included. And we can add that in individually into our GIS software that we're going to have that'll be live, as well as onto this map when we update it. So this is a traffic count map, and we used a one-mile, three- and five-mile radius, which is what commercial brokers use when they're looking at information for retail and hospitality-type businesses. And we felt that this was pretty important because you can see the traffic counts in the center of Five Points are around 28,000 cars per day. So for a business looking to draw on people, they have a great opportunity there. And as you go out a little further, I mean, there's up to 75, 77,000. So plenty of opportunity for customers, for your business.
Where did you get the traffic count?
That's from a software called Esri. And we actually got Richland County that...
So that pulled for anywhere else as well?
Yes.
Okay. And how current is it?
This was in January, and so we used yesterday's address for it since we've...
So it can be as specific for address? I mean, but it can be, it's timely. Like, if you pulled it now, it's, this information is not like a several months old?
No, it's current.
Okay.
Esri's a national provider, and they probably update their data set more often than you.
Okay, so as we go through this section, I'll provide a little bit of introduction to it. But then, when you guys start delving into the harder questions, we're going to have the experts from those areas come up and the people that'll be responsible for those areas. And there's a section where we'll probably use some supplemental slides to help go over things. But I know one of the questions that we're working on is the duration, whether it's 24- to 36-month duration. So that'll be something that we want to determine with council today, if possible, on how long this initiative will last. The current CRR program has already been in Five Points for the past 12 months. So, and I'll let Melissa, when she speaks a little bit more, maybe give more information. Or if she doesn't, I can tell you. So if we were to go and say 36 months, then that's going to push it 36 plus 12 that it's already been in that area. So we have to think about that.
A major person coming in to make a mass investment cannot do it in 24 months. Our system is not set up to provide that. I mean, the time they do the planning, the closing, the redevelopment. I mean, just look at Harden Street at this point. I mean, Gus and them have been working on that thing for three years now. The whole strip up there past the Waffle House, all the way up to Spectrum.
So I think initially, we said 36 months. And this gets back to why I want you all to give clear direction on what you want us to do because I think it's been in the midst of these conversations that some folks associated with the plan, or Five Points, said 24 months. So we're happy to do whichever. We just, we want to know today, so we're not spending a whole lot of time going back and forth on any one item. I thought we started with 36 months in the first place, but...
Yeah, and then we had a meeting and it was going to be 24. And then we had another meeting, and then I was like, what are we doing?
We just said, well, let y'all tell us which way you want to go.
Where did the 24 come from? That was from the Five Points developers?
They asked for 36.
They asked for 36, so where did the 24 come from?
Came from that meeting we had at Busby. Somebody threw out that they wanted it 24 because they wanted to rotate it quicker, not thinking about it. Really takes time to...
Well, I also think it's also been from a, it's been reported that, you know, as if it's taking, it's too long to get it done or get it started. And there needs to be some urgency for it to get done. I don't think it's about that. I think we need to be realistic in getting all of this vetted properly and prepped up to do it, which we've done. And when y'all are ready to start it, we'll start it. 36 months, I think, is realistic, but I do think...
Could we not say, I'm sorry, could we not say 24 with an evaluation period? Because I do, I do remember that conversation at Busby. And I was going to save this comment for the end, but, you know, we still have to be careful. I know the desire and the reasons why the pilot will begin in Five Points. And I know that, you know, particularly Mr. Rickman and now Mr. Brennan have worked really hard to make sure that we're tailoring the incentives to meet the needs of Five Points. But especially for those of us who are at large and have other areas, you know, the perception tends to be you're now putting more resources, more energy in Five Points. What about, and Ed and I just came from a great meeting about Beltline, but when you talk about the challenges, there's the same challenges there. There are shootings, there's vacant buildings, there's, you know, buildings, businesses, viable businesses that are closing up. So we would like to go around, but I do understand Mr. Rickman's point that, you know, 36 months in development years is not a long time. So what if we do, we say 24, you evaluate it. If it seems like what we've done has really kick-started, and, you know, if someone's already in the pipeline, of course, their project would continue. But if somebody waits till month 24 to say, okay, we want to take advantage of this, that may not, but you've already had other projects that are really going. There might not be a need to continue it. So what about evaluating it after 24 months? And then if there's a need to continue it for another 12 months, you can do that. But then you may still also be able to start looking at another area to show that this is a citywide program.
What would prevent us, Tamika, to do that anyway? Let's say you went 36 months, and you say, you know what? We're going to give a period of time to make sure that these things, that we're able to do them and that they're catching on. What would prevent us at month 12 or 18 to start the next area? We could have two areas going at one time, you know? I don't think that's prohibited. I think just you want enough time so that you can draw enough interest, you can get the investment. As you said, it takes time. But I don't think that would prevent us from jump-starting somewhere else. I don't think we're, at least my perception is when we talk about this, that we won't wait until we finish one complete area to go to the next.
Well, other than, but maybe staff resources, is that a question?
That actually came up in our discussions with the city manager is that we have been there for 12 months, and we're going to stay in there another additional 12 months. But as Mr. Rickman said, there's no reason we can't actually have another CRR project in a different targeted area that's going on at the same time. So both going on parallel to each other. So that's not a problem. Now, it will take not only more staff resources, but it would probably take more financial resources as well to do such.
The only point in these, how many points would come up with? Nine, nine points that is time-sensitive is point number five, which deals with building improvement financing. So if you look at all the rest of the points, they can be forever. So you're only talking about point number five when you're talking about incentive? Maximum incentive is $35,000?
It will be, yes, sir.
So that's...
For that valid area.
You're not talking about a whole lot of incentive?
Well, and the attention given. I mean, there is, within some of the points, the ability for staff to kind of move certain projects on the front of the line, so to speak, during this 24- to 36-month period. But as far as, you're right, Mr. DeVal, the actual incentives themselves, they're sort of living and breathing and ongoing. There's going to be some judgment calls, I think, made and along with y'all's approvals of how professional assistance is given to incentivize, encourage, fast-track certain things to happen to get those vacancies filled.
That's a good plan. I think we're kind of on the same wavelength because initially, we talked about, there was a concern about the time. And then there is the perception out there, not the case. It's a good plan. It's what essentially has to be done, not all of it, when you want to help boost development in an area, even from the business standpoint. So I think whatever we can agree on as a minimum or maximum, that's fine. But in terms of staff time, that is a challenge. But I think there are some points or some options in here that can be maybe pulled or shared elsewhere without taking away from the overall intent of what you're trying to accomplish here. If we can do that down the road, I think that helps everybody. And, you know, we're the same as what we've been doing lately with our old folks and Beltline is a good example.
Is there a consensus for 36 months?
Yes.
Is it 36 months, and then after, you know, if...
With an evaluation.
Yeah, if an evaluation. I still say evaluation around 24 months because if it's going really well, like, we hope and are planning that it go, then maybe some of those staff resources, it won't be as taxing to start another area. But we want to make sure that we... But we want to make sure that we commit to this area for the extended time.
And keep in mind that we actually come to you yearly for each fiscal year regarding CRR anyway. So, that would be the time to evaluate what we've done and where we go. In terms of staffing, I think one special aspect of this is that there's so many different departments involved. It's forcing more collaboration between departments. So, it's not like it's on one person. The FOG program, for instance, that's Columbia Water also. Economic Development will be helping us to assist, will assist us with identifying those buildings that need assistance and that maybe have an interest. We've already been working with that. You brought us one person already that has an interest. The name of the ping ball, I don't play it, but I'm sorry. But it's, it's, I'm sorry. But there are interested businesses that really are, they've heard about it because of their discussions in Five Points with other merchants in the area. So, we have a number of businesses that have an interest already in being a part of this. So, I don't think there'll be a problem doing that.
Sure.
Procedurally, we're going through these. What is the decision to be made today or tonight in council? What's the ultimate goal of being presented this and moving it forward?
So, our, from a staff perspective, the goal is to get you all to formally endorse the plan tonight. Because you can't vote during the work session. So, we were, or you don't have to do it tonight. I mean, we could put it on the agenda for the February fourth in the evening for a vote then. But typically, when we present something during the work session, if the council wants to move it forward, you could move it forward tonight, yes, sir. And there's a place always on the agenda for items that were discussed during the work session if you want to, you know, take any type of action tonight, yes, sir.
And we could finish going through the incentives. But is there any reason why we wouldn't do it tonight? Does anybody have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And assuming that thirty-six months, the only other thing, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, would be is February first a date that you all are considering for us to officially start it?
Well, I'm glad we're having this conversation simply because we're at Busby.
Bless you.
I'm sorry. So, I got it?
Yes, sir.
At Busby Street, it was twenty-four months that I got stuck on. Now, if we are consensually talking about thirty-six months, that at least gives us that kind of wiggle room to do what we need to do. The other piece of that was, it was not clear to me whether or not, once it got started and it was starting real well, whether or not we could do another area. And that was not clear. It's clearer to me now that we can.
Yes, sir. And again, it'll depend on, you know, funding, availability, and that sort of thing. But you already have added the side streets, which Melissa will clarify when, I guess, when she comes up in a second. So, the area I think that they were already working in was in this area of vicinity anyway. I think we clarified with you all that you wanted to sort of expand the area. But then if you want to go to a completely different area, as you're saying, Councilman, we could consider that, you know, during the normal time that Melissa would come just for the CRR portion of the program.
Just a matter of money.
Where's the money? Give me the money. Okay, thank you, Kay.
The second one I probably can handle for Krista, it's pretty straightforward. We did approve the ordinance to streamline the approval process for sidewalk dining. And it's going to be delegating the approval for sidewalk dining to staff. And so, that'll, you know, free up some timing that some of the businesses were experiencing when they were requesting sidewalk dining. And that's citywide. So, what you'll see from our office is, after we get this one published, we'll start doing things like this in each of our business districts. And some of the same incentives will be listed there as well. Sewer expansion fee financing. It's either new commercial or industrial businesses may apply for an extended payment financing option for sewer expansion fees at zero interest rate. It used to be complex.
One question, because I know we passed it already. Although this is part of the incentives of this, but we passed the citywide, though. So, if anybody has that, it's available to everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. It was first reading, I think, second reading on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we said that so that no one thinks, because I've been telling people that too. But make sure that people understand that this incentive is citywide. It's just part of the incentive package here.
Yes, ma'am.
The next one, Clint, you might will say to you. Is the Grease Trap Forgivable Loan Program. This allows business to apply through the Office of Business Opportunities who will have an application that sends over to Columbia Water for a five-thousand-dollar forgivable loan for a grease trap improvement for Inceptors or the Grease Trap. And this too is citywide.
So, I've got a question. The grease trap, are we giving flexibility to size of grease trap? Or are we still with the one-size-fits-all restaurant, square footage, everything?
So, the Councilman, the one-size-fits-all is our, that's the standard on the book, you know, based on, okay, this many seats in a restaurant. If the flexibility comes in, if we can look at a similar establishment that has the same number of seats, maybe the same type of business, if it's a chain, we can look at their water usage information. Typically, that's less than what the standard engineering calculation would show you. So, we can do that. We can do fixture units calculation. There's a variety of different ways that we can use-
Location, there, there, deep in that discussion is the flexibility for our staff to get away from the black-and-white chart and look at the business and say, it isn't going to work here. We have to do under counter. Or, you know, they're, they're just a bagel shop. They need to under counter. They don't need a thousand gallon in the parking lot for half of-
We have, we have always had that flexibility. We are exercising that flexibility more and more now previously.
Does the potential tenant have to bring that information to you? Or do you have a good inventory of samples if you were to rain down the size of the grease trap based on their usage?
It's on the applicant to bring that information. But we do, and we're going to do a better job of publicizing that flexibility so that they know it's available. Don't just automatically go to the standard book engineering calculation. You know, we can work with them.
And I guess, let me back up to number point three real quick. The sewer expansion, that's based on square footage of the roof, of the property or something?
That's the stormwater fee that's-
Stormwater, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's a different discussion.
Sewer plant expansion fee, though, also plays into that. The sizing of the grease trap based on what the load is. But the sewer plant expansion fee is based on how much water they're using as well. So, it can impact both. And we have flexibility for both to talk with them rather than, okay, it's the standard multiplier.
So, all this will be in the marketing stuff?
So, for the, for the grease trap, we call it out. The first sentence, "Resources are available to inform commercial establishments of new affordable options for flexible grease trap designs." It's the first part. But I'm wondering, Clint, if it's the same for the sewer. Maybe we could add a little something on the, so that that's clear, too. So, I'll make a note of that.
Is that economic development? Are y'all the concierge there that gathers the information from our other departments? Or for everything? For everything, for sewer expansion fee, for grease trap. If I'm, if I want to open a restaurant in Five Points, am I going to have to go to ten different departments? Or is there going to be one concierge, point of contact where I can come to and then expedite this whole process?
You can go ahead.
I'm going to add, go ahead.
You got it.
Well, yes, sir. Economic Development is, is going to have this concierge service. What we're also in the process of doing that also came out, came up in the beginnings of these discussions. And we've talked about it over the years, too. But again, it's a, it's a new hire. So, we posted a position for a liaison who would be that person you're describing, the more concierge. It may need, ultimately need to be two, but only, I'm trying to figure out how to hire the one.
Right.
And there was a presentation made that was before you were elected, that Krista can maybe get, share some information with Mr. Brennan on that person. So, we did some research in other places on what that person looks like, where it's been successful, where they're housed. And so, we're working through that now. But it is posted. There should be this week if it's not already. Okay, it was posted. We're just in salary range. But that's, that person-
Are they going to be housed in development, or where are you thinking?
I'm thinking economic development, but I don't, I haven't, haven't shared that with staff yet. Okay.
They, they need to be housed wherever the most silos are.
And I was, that's what I was wondering about development services. Would that not be a good, because would that person also help with the walking the permitting through?
They're probably going to have to have relationships with everybody.
Yeah, they'll have relationships with everybody. I'm just thinking about house, you know, since you're talking about where the house, I'm wondering if-
You got water downstairs, you got planning, you got zoning, you got everything. And hopefully, as we move towards consolidation, economic development will be in the same building as well.
That's right.
I think from what we saw, you wanted somebody that is very intimately near with the planning and the utility areas, but still kind of sat outside those processes a little bit.
We need somebody who's been in the real estate business, who's actually gone and tried to get a permit.
Architect who wants to get out the game.
Yeah. And does the person report, you know, directly to one of the ACMs or to me? You know, so we, we-
ACM is what I would say.
Yeah, and we've talked about a couple of different scenarios. But that person's going to have to have that autonomy and those relationships with everybody.
I think, I think that's very promising. It's great to hear.
So, just pointing that. Ryan, is that similar to the position or the, I guess, the expected outcome of the meetings we were having a couple of years ago with the chamber?
Yes.
With that one person?
We implement, we implemented a version of that, Mr. Deval.
Some version of it.
Through our discussions with staff. You know, it needs to be a little bit more identified, a lot more identified for everyone to know. We've attempted it, but-
That would be one, at least one centralized aspect of all of this when we look down the road at whether or not community development is centralized or not.
Okay.
In terms of the, all of the components that make-
Yeah, and I think these things come in and they all kind of funnel in through different channels. And, you know, we catch them in different buckets, you know? You can get calls, I get calls.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is that is one of the most important bit of feedback we get in terms of how you get through the system from beginning to end. I think that helps everybody.
Yes, sir.
One nice quick question about the liaison. Will that person be specifically for this commercial corridor redevelopment zone over the course of two years? Or is this for the entire development process for citywide?
It's really meant to be for the entire, entire development process citywide. I think obviously, if this works as it should, there's going to be a lot of interest and activity for this area. So, that, this area will probably be keeping that person very busy, I would hope. But it should be for any developer or potential person looking to start a business.
Most salary, big bonus for completion.
Bonuses are not allowed.
Yeah, they are. We've been, we've given bonuses over the last years.
Not legally.
All right, Kay. So, we'll move on to number five, Building Improvements Financing. You guys may recognize this as our, some of our CRR programming. So, Melissa's going to talk to you about that.
So, again, this is a very popular program, our Commercial Redevelopment and Retention Program, CRR, formerly known as the facade program. So, we have been in the targeted area now, this is year two. We started in Harden, and the current targeted area is Harden Street, Millwood Street, and portions of Taylor and Gervais Street. So, we, with the incentive part, we're going to actually not only stay here in this area, in the current targeted area, but we'll now also expand to the side streets of College Street, Green Street, Saluda Avenue, Divine Street, Santee Avenue, and Blossom Street. So, in addition to our traditional elements of the CRR program, which includes exterior and interior improvement forgivable loans, we're also adding the vacancy, commercial building vacancy forgivable loan as well. Now, in order to actually participate in this loan, you would actually have to utilize the other two loan programs, too, the exterior and the interior loans, before you can actually do the incentive for the vacancy loan.
Any questions?
So, we've always had the fifteen and the ten.
Yes, ma'am.
So, to incentivize-
More development.
More development in this area.
We've added the vacancy commercial building vacancy forgivable loan program.
And that's for this, that's for the boundaries of this area that we're piloting for the-
Yes, ma'am.
Three years.
Yes, ma'am. That now also includes the side streets that I mentioned.
So, potentially, a person could receive up to-
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it federal funding that comes in the form of matching for that?
No, sir. This, in the past, we've used some community development block grant funding, but more recently, it's all been through our general fund dollars.
So, Melissa, let me, probably more hypothetical than anything. So, does that also pertain, once we get the same role and we, and we move to another area that's not included in the proposed side streets in the targeted area? Does that same thing still apply?
If the council wants to do another pilot incentive program in another targeted area in the district, yes, sir. We can use the same program that we're doing here and take that into another district. Now, if you want to, in regards to having CRR traditional and CRR incentive going on at the same time, we could actually do another CRR traditional program that only includes the exterior and interior improvements in another part of the district, or another part of the city, excuse me.
The money is there.
Providing the money is there.
Provided the money is there, correct.
And that, and if you did that, Councilman, just that incentivized piece for the vacancy piece, the extra ten thousand wouldn't apply to the, to the area that you would add on.
Unless you're trying to do another pilot.
Unless you want to-
Let's not-
Well, wouldn't be called a pilot at that. Once we finish this, and if everything goes well, this will start being something-
Like a targeted incentive, targeted incentive.
But let me just add that, just remember that if we go to another area, we may take three of these points and target it there or add some different- Because each area is going to need something different. And so, I, you know, I think this gives us a good template to get going. And, you know, there's certain aspects in here that are going to apply everywhere, and we know that. So, let's just, don't forget that, that this, this gives us a template to really try something different.
And another part of this is that the additional incentive for the vacancy built, vacancy, commercial building vacancy forgivable loan program, I thought I shortened it, but it's still kind of long, that we tried to make sure it was flexible, the use of the funds, to allow and incentivize people really to utilize this program as well. So, there's more flexibility with this loan than there are with the exterior improvements and the interior improvements.
I do, I do like the fact that you have to, you have to do the package.
Yes, sir.
To, you can't, well, maybe I should say, you can't get the vacancy if you don't do the others, which is very important.
Yes, sir.
As we try to fix the facades and everything else.
That program is pretty successful on Main Street.
Yes, it has. That was actually one of our first areas. That was way before I started. But it was very successful, to the point they wanted to go back there. So, and you'll hear a lot of the different areas come up to you. Well, when are you going to bring the facade program back? And it's really CRR, so, because it is a very, very popular program. And you can actually see the tangible changes that it's making when we do have a presence there, and we do this program.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think it's Millwood Avenue, isn't it? Just so we're on our marketing materials. Is it, is it Millwood Avenue? Yes. No, I'm saying, because we have Millwood Street, so is it Millwood Avenue, right?
Avenue?
I'm sorry, they know I'm very like-
I should know this, I cruise it every day.
I work it for sure, but I thought so.
Okay. Number six, parking. Do you want me to kind of give it over your L U?
Sure, either one. It is also one of the most popular programs.
Well, come on, come on down, elf.
It is. I would have to concur that parking is another popular program in Columbia. This is where everyone may nod.
We have.
Convince us, Elle, go for it.
Convince you. Um, we have been approached, um, with a number of components and inquiries with regards to parking in Five Points specifically. Um, one that we have previously addressed, and to make sure that everyone understands thoroughly, Passport Parking is available, our mobile app, at all of the parking spaces throughout Columbia, in addition to Five Points. So whether that, you are parked at an on-street meter, um, there is a sticker zone associated with Passport Parking, or a particular Passport Parking sign. At every parking space in the city, you can utilize our mobile parking app. One of the other areas, um, that also often get, um, inquiries, lots of attention, is the beautification of some of our surface parking areas over in the Five Points area, of which Robert Anderson is going to come in a moment and speak of some of the beautification that will start, um, early spring over for our Exxon lot, um, we're excited about, um, that has been long awaited. Indeed, we have. And he will give you some of the details as far as the timeline and what to expect with regards to the beautification to enhance that parking experience there in the core of Five Points District. Robert?
So, is, is Robert the end of parking, or are you coming back up? Okay, I, I have a question, but it's.
So I should be fairly brief. What you're gonna see now is the, uh, current conditions of the parking lot. And in an effort to save the city a substantial amount of money, we've looked at this, uh, pretty in-depth from Public Works, and we've decided that the Public Works team is actually gonna handle the, um, the construction project from beginning to end on this. So it's gonna take several of us to do and several divisions. So with the help of engineering, if we go to the next slide, that's the current view. We will have something that looks similar to this. The good news about us doing the projects is, Robert Swett's got a couple ideas, maybe to maybe add a parking space, or add some moped spaces by redesigning some of the curbs, and there'll be no change orders when we do the work. Uh, I know we're gonna relocate the bike rack to the upper corner over by the backside of Pecknells Music, which will free up the Harden Street location. We do think it will fit. And now for the big one is the timeline. And our timeline takes us out about thirteen weeks. So we're planning on starting on March thirtieth, that would be after St. Patrick's Day. It'll take us about three weeks to demo the parking lot. We've, uh, been down there and actually looked around a little bit. The concrete that the Exxon building used to sit on is eight to ten inches thick in some places, so it's gonna be a little bit more difficult. Well.
Tanks.
The tanks are gone. We removed, they were removed several years ago, and we actually filled that in, so we know they're gone. So we was actually in, in the process of filling that in. So the demolition, and we also have a tunnel, and we're kinda glad we're doing this work. We have a storm drain tunnel that runs very close to there, so we can pay very close attention and make sure that there's, uh, no holes or anything gets poked into our storm drain tunnel. The grading and curb work will take about seven weeks, during which the electricians and forestry will be in working and making sure we get the conduits put in for some of the electrical needs that we'll need for street lighting and irrigation. Then we will bring a contractor in to pave that. We've always said that we're great at everything we do. We're not perfect. We're not perfect in the paving business. There's a lot of people that's got a lot more knowledge than us, so we'll, we'll bring in a paving company. And then we'll finish up the project by installing the lights and installing the plant material. And hopefully, within thirteen weeks, we will turn this over to Elle and her staff, and we will have a beautified parking lot.
So the staff originally looked at estimates, put the project out for bid. I was always convinced from the beginning, they could do it themselves, for the most part, albeit the paving, I, I understand that part. But this is a much more cost-effective way to get this done. And I, I always thought they, they're very capable, so, um, Robert, you know Robert, so he had to be convinced, I think, but, um.
Is there rendering?
There's, um.
There's not a rendering. We had one years ago, but with, it's changed a couple times, so we didn't wanna bring that to get everybody's thoughts about, but we do meet the landscape ordinances.
I was gonna say, what's, like, plantings?
There'll be some plantings, there'll be some trees.
Okay, could you back up two slides? That one, Robert. Down at the bottom right-hand corner, by that last car, there is a sign right there.
Right at the top.
That last, no, no, on the other side of the street.
Right there, right there. See the white car?
Across the street, right there, that sign right there. That sign right there says, "Do not enter." And my wife and I like to frequent Five Points for lunch, and when you're coming down Saluda and you wanna go to the parking lot, I say that you oughta be able to go straight into the parking lot. Every time I do that, she disagrees with my decision.
Howard, you should be walking as close as you live. You shouldn't be down there using up a parking spot.
Well, Howard, are you talking about going that way? Are you talking about going that way into the parking lot, or that way?
I know that.
Because if you go that way, those cars are this way. You can't go, that's a one-way street.
What the sign means is, don't go on that side of the divided Saluda. But the way it's facing.
It looks like you can't go this way.
A wife that's not as accustomed to driving as, as me.
Howard, we are.
Do not enter.
Councilman, I will say that wives are always right, and I am probably very smart right now.
If you turn that sign twenty-five degrees, so it is perpendicular to the street, then you wouldn't have that.
I will get, I, I will get David Brewer to look at that. We are not changing any of the ingresses and egresses. We already have a DOT permit for this project, so it will be easier for us to get this moving very quickly.
Well, if you go down there one Monday, and you see it turned a little bit.
Understood.
If you go down there and you see a tow truck, 'cause he got hit by somebody, you know what happened.
That's right.
So we know there's a lot of interest to get this lot done, and it is well, you know, long overdue. Understood. We just want you all to understand our approach and be advocates with the community.
Same number of spots and everything?
Oh, yes, sir.
We'll lose a couple when we move the bike rack.
But like, how many?
I thought you said Robert thought he could, Robert Swett thought he could add some.
Well, we're gonna add a couple, but then you lose a couple. We gained some moped spots, so.
Kinda net effect, net out. Let's get them.
We need the landscape ordinance, so that if we're losing them, it's because of the requirements that we hold.
But it'll look better and a little feel safer.
We shouldn't be taking away a space for a moped space, when we could be creative in some other areas around there for mopeds.
The moped spaces we're adding, there's no, it's not deep enough for parking places. That's the only reason we're adding them.
So let's get back with a net number that we're losing, if any. I'm hoping we're not losing.
That's a very motivational parking spot.
It is. It is vital.
So, in, in, I, I believe too, and we'll confirm and we'll revisit, um, as my preference would be, um, a gain of.
Yeah.
However, um, in conjunction with this beautification, um, we have a, a plan that we're moving forward with regards to lighting up at the twenty-two, twenty-one Divine Deck. So when we do have a, a lack of parking in a vital area for a number of weeks, that we're able to provide par- parking alternatives. So we'll make sure that we have our lighting plan well underway, and we can provide safe parking for night and weekend, um, at an ulterior location.
Is that Sean's name?
It is. And, um, we had previously, um, discussed the pilot program of extended enforcement in the, um, Five Points area. We continue to work on policy and procedure and developing a marketing plan so that the entire community, um, both the businesses and students, visitors are all fully informed, and we have a, a solid plan in place before we move forward with extended enforcement. Hopefully, in conjunction, so that it would work well with all of these other moving pieces.
And so, from our understanding, the last I heard, this timeline for Exxon coming online is in line with what the Five Points Association, um, had requested, as far as the timing after, in the summer, after graduation, before we.
Before they return. So we would start after St. Patrick's Day and be complete before the students return.
We would start after St. Patrick's Day, not after graduation.
Correct.
Okay, good. But enforcement, extended hours of enforcement, you all's directive was to move forward with that. So we just, I've heard back and forth about that from the community.
Give us some heads up before you do that, though. I mean, just tell us.
Very important, um, that we wanna give ample notice, and we'll involve the media and social media, because we want everyone to be informed, not caught off guard. There'll even be a, yes, a period of warnings that will issue.
No, it's not, no.
Citywide communication that it's happening in Five Points. The pilot is only.
My understanding is, is the Five Points folks have strictly said, "Do what you do everywhere else. Don't come to us, and we're the only ones at nine o'clock."
But we don't do everything everywhere else the same. They're the ones, they're the ones who want it. They, they're not treated the same now at their request. So again.
Their enforcement doesn't even start till eleven, right? Because we moved their enforcement, because that was their request, and then we do the Saturdays, and that was at their request.
I, I highly recommend you all are real clear on if you wanna do this or not. I mean, what we got from the last discussion about just options and citywide enforcement was the Main Street District, which we've continued to deal with, being thoroughly confused that we were about to do something different from, from them, and that was never stated, and we're not. I mean, no one's directed us to do anything different. And they don't want any enforcement on Main Street. So, you know, at some point, we have to, yes, either be consistent all across the city or not. And if we're going to continue to do certain things in certain business districts, that's fine too. We just wanna know what it is y'all want us to do. So what was directed was a pilot program in Five Points, and Elle can be specific about the boundaries. Um, thank you. That would extend the hours, and maybe you wanna say what they are now and what it would become.
Certainly. Um, you were right, ma'am. Um, the current hours of enforcement are eleven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. And with the addition of Saturday in Five Points and not starting enforcement until eleven, when throughout the city it's nine. Um, we did propose a citywide nine to nine, and upon discussion, decided to move forward with baby steps and a pilot over in the Five Points area, of which would be contained to the core of Five Points residential area. They all have their set, um, specific enforcement hours. So this just would be within the core. And again, as we are trying to recognize and serve the needs of curb management of the, the parking demand nights and weekends, so while as we can encourage the turnover of night and weekend and metered on-street parking, we have to enforce that, back that up with something. So in, enforcing until nine o'clock, so we can capture that dinner hour so that various individuals are not parking at four, five, and six, and they're not leaving for the entire night, then they're circling, and it causes additional congestion and, and issues in Five Points. And we were going to take a small step forward with the pilot only in Five Points.
Which we originally thought was, that, you know, that liked.
It was a request. I mean, it may have been, I mean, I think when I first had that request, Amy Beth was there. I know there's been a lot of changes in dialogue since she's left and different things, but, you know, maybe we'll, part of it is having that frank discussion with them and, and figuring it out, 'cause the mixed messages aren't helping.
I agree, but I, I've had that conversation, and I think this would be a point of contention with the Five Points merchants. You know, there's this, in general, I think there's this air of, you know, what's gonna happen, but, you know, change, we're setting up for good things to happen, I believe.
What's their biggest fear?
They, I believe the Five Points merchants and all merchants in Five Points don't wanna be treated as a way outlier, right? So I get that their hours are a little different. Um, I think that from the response that I got, they wanna stay as close to possible as other hospitality districts throughout the city. And I think, I think not only the hospitality owners, the retail, um, I think they would have an issue with that. I would love to go back and get more input, uh, as you said, um, and get back to you. I don't know if that holds up this process, or we just strike that and come back and add later to any edited.
I mean, it shouldn't hold up the, the, this, but there needs to be a definitive, you know, and you're not gonna get everybody to agree, so we just need to say definitive, you know, yes or no, and then move forward.
I agree, and, and not everybody agreed on the no parking variance, I get that. But this conversation was not had as much as the no parking variance.
I think we need to get the Five Points Association on record as either for or against it, so we'll, we'll know how to move forward.
Did they not take it up this past week?
On what part? Which one? Well, I mean, we're talking about two different things.
Yeah, no, they took up the no, no, no parking variance. They did not discuss or give any feedback on the meter hour change.
Extended hours.
Correct.
Extended hours on enforcement is the one that's still hanging out there. The other one we're moving forward on.
Well, 'cause when we added the Saturday, that was the thought, that was the discussion, was we need turnover. People are, you know, on the weekends, you know, people will come and park on Friday, and they stay all weekend, and so we need turnover. So, I mean, that rationale is the same, you know, and I understand wanting to be same as other hospitality districts, but, you know, the Vista and Main Street have more parking, garages and other things, so the parking demand is not, is not the same as it is in Five Points. And so I know for me, if I'm going to Five Points and I wanna go, um, you know, to Garibaldi's or, or where, that's not anymore. But you know. But, yeah, you wanna go somewhere and you don't find a parking, I might say, you know, you know, I'm gonna go somewhere else. And so I think that was kind of the conversation, at least the one I had with Amy Beth, was, you know, so that our, our, mostly the restaurants were able to have that nighttime business, they needed more turnover. I think certainly, once we get the more parking that we talked about and hope for, that'll relea- relieve some of those tensions. So the question is, do they wanna wait for that parking and recognize that there's still that tension of having that turnover at night if we don't keep enforcing, or not, so.
And, and is it really truly wanting to be like the other districts or not? Because then if you use the example of at Holiday, I mean, we got through a whole production about that. When we are not doing enforcement anywhere else, then we really have gotten beat up in the past about, no, why are you not doing enforcement on, you know, the day after Thanksgiving for shopping? We want enforcement, we want enforcement, we want enforcement. So I, you know, I'm sorta at a place where, as I said to the Main Street business owners, you know, before we make any changes, we aren't making any changes till we know with some certainty, certainty, there's never gonna be a real consensus, but if you, you know, you, you know, but if you're not ready, you know, I take direction from council, but we also can't just keep going in a circle either.
We also, um, if I can add, we, we receive a lot of criticism over how we manage our surface lots, and, and a lot of people have wanted us in Five Points to manage those late into the evening, even if we don't do street parking. There are expenses associated with staffing and managing small lots, which the revenues will not cover the expenses, and that, maybe that's a decision we make to do that. I'm not sure the demand is such that if we charge for the surface lots into the evening, but the street lot, the street spaces are free, I'm not sure the demand's there to support this use of the surface lot. So you'll hear some feedback from people who criticize how we've done not only the Exxon lot, but, um, we've talked to some of the private surface lot owners about partnering to try to manage together. Again, if the street spaces are at no charge, I'm not sure it makes sense to do dynamic model pricing into the evening on the surface lots. But if you want us to, we can. And we are working as staff to develop a group of individuals that we can walk across the city with to, um, help bounce ideas off and give us feedback.
Let me ask you something. The five dollars in the Vista, is that a private contract, or is that run by the city?
Those are private.
Those are private? Those are self-in, that, that, they're self-insured, they, they don't?
They are. And we've talked to that company about possibly coming to Five Points to manage our lots, since they already have people out there. They were not interested a few years ago, we can certainly talk to them again.
And I've requested from the Five Points folks, a list of surface lot owners that would be interested in participating in that program. If we were to find a, a contractor that would wanna take that all over, and I think that would help with a lot of fronts, you know?
It would, it would. I think there's one individual, um, they're permitted through a valet permit, um, through Parking Services.
I think there's one individual, um, they're permitted through a valet permit, um, through Parking Services. But all of the insurances, all of that's provided as part of the permitting process. That's, would be our only piece in, um, the, the understanding of where they're valeting vehicles throughout the city.
Vista meters cut off at what time?
Six.
Six.
So you'd have the same mix down there?
Citywide, it cuts off at six.
So we will back out the enhanced enforcement pilot program, yes, sir?
Uh, the two points that we were carrying forward for discussion, one of them has been handled today with the parking requirements. The other was height restrictions, um, on perimeter properties around the Five Points area. Is that going to wait for rezoning?
So, so we have worked with the Five Points Association and their area stakeholders. We've provided them a map of the current requirements and asked for their input. We are yet to receive their input. There's not, there does not seem to be a consensus across the stakeholders group as to where they would prefer there not be height limitations or...
I, I wouldn't say that. There, there is a consensus. And the only real consensus that you bring, all of them is, is in the center. The center where the, what they call the true village in the middle.
Keep low?
Keep low. Everything on the perimeter can go up. So a good example would be, as I mentioned earlier, which is Singh's property, the, uh, Old China Garden. There you could easily do height and step up because you're, you're, you're going back towards the park behind Richard's Building, where the old cab company was and all that. On the railroad side would be a perfect side to go up.
We have yet to receive that feedback formally, and we have asked for it. And when we sat in the meeting and started looking at those examples, there was not a consensus in the room with us that day even. Now, they did agree they'd go back and work on it, but they have yet to give it to us.
We got it from the representatives of the, the Coalition of Neighborhoods. The only, the only person...
I probably shouldn't ask that about the neighborhoods, because...
The only people we got feedback from, or the area that was concerned, was the center. A real concern about the center getting a high rise.
Well, we'd love to see what their thoughts are coming back from the association. That doesn't mean we just take it carte blanche, but it gives us something to work with.
So can there be, I know we want to move this forward tonight, though, but on some of, some of these, can there not be a request that the association comes and, comes to council and officially puts on the record, this is what, where our consensus is?
I, I, I'm just, I, I think that we should do the parking to help turn things around. I think we need to do height. I mean, and I'll be honest, there's a lot of things that the association just, they won't make a decision. The reality is, is that we're trying to do something different to enhance an area that has been in the, and, and I'm, I'm going to say this, and I hope I don't offend anybody, but been in the same crowd's hands for the last years. And we got to try some different things. This is a, a three-year program that we're talking about. This isn't a lifetime change.
Well, but if the height is lifetime, so...
So, and the height...
That's the only thing is, if you're asking, I mean, I, I agree. But if I, like, if I lived on Pine Street and I, you know, and now I have something towering...
But you still got to go through the same process. I mean, they can't just go build a six-story building on the corner of, of, of Divine and Harden Street. It, it wouldn't fit in the character of...
And it was deliberate that heights not referenced in any document y'all would take up tonight.
Yeah, this isn't, that is not in here because as far as staff is concerned, which is the other part of this, I mean, I'm, you know, we, I take direction from you all. So I can't, and I have not, um, you know, asked the staff to be the arbiter of discussions by multiple groups because, I mean, we just, we can't, we can't do that.
Yeah, I think this is...
I think we are all set for this.
I did send an email to, early on, to some of the representatives who came with the 10-point plan recommendations originally, asking for that formal feedback. But we've never gotten that. So we just moved forward, and we left that out. Um, as far as the enhanced enforcement or extended hours, you know, I told the staff to put it in here because the last thing we talked about with council was to move forward with that. If it sounds like there's not a comfort level to do that, then we can back that out of the document. Everything else is, as y'all have...
The height's not on here, but the, but the, we do have the, um, it's the parking. That's what I was going to ask, though.
So the next item is the zoning.
Zoning, yeah.
That was what Mr. Brennan said. I guess there was some, some additional discussion about. And they seem, I guess, there, there's a consensus. Well, it's been approved from the...
Yeah, it's, it's good, yeah.
A 20% reduction.
I mean, it hasn't come to council yet.
Right, but that's what we had discussed before.
Right.
Well, there wasn't a, there wasn't a change on this, being supportive of this.
And that will come to council in March with final approval scheduled for April.
And the, the, what's the reason for March is because it has to now go to the zoning public? Okay. That's our net zoning, available zoning public here.
Who's the applicant on that? We are.
I understand. Did we skip over seven?
We did.
All right, man, we'll just, quick question. I love this part. I, I appreciate the fact that we are expediting, going to the front of the line essentially, um, projects that come through the process. As it, are we going to tinker with the actual process to condense it so that the project gets through the permitting process faster? Less lead times, less sitting on desks, less this, that? See what I'm saying?
Obviously, there's a lot of people involved, not just my folks in the development review, engineering, fire. And I know that everybody's always looking to find efficiencies in their review, absolutely. However, this will be just a matter of putting it to the front of the line and shortening the time period. So people have, with our group, 10 business days instead of 15 business days to turn around those first comments.
So I think that might be some additional slides from that presentation back at, I guess it was Busby Street, when we did, um, kind of a deeper dive into what's real, what's myth regarding our permitting process and what we hear often about it takes too long. And Krista really went into more detail at that point about, about those, um, different steps. So that might be something to share with Mr. Brennan.
Well, I think that was a wonderful opportunity. You can bring it on the concierge offering.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm sure you've, you've taken from case studies, you've encountered a lot of these that have really...
The biggest concern about that process.
Yeah, I, yes, sir. We, we do need to utilize those opportunities. I think there's some opportunities that are already out there that maybe we recognize people don't know that they can ask for that, sit down in the beginning and go through their application. I mean, we already have the ability to do that, and we do it. Whether or not it's known that you can do that in every case, so... I don't want to speak for you, Krista, but I think that was some of the conversation, that we recognize we need to utilize the concierge service more, um, to our advantage if we're already doing it. People need to know we're doing it, and they can take advantage of it.
One of the interesting things, about two months ago, was meeting with a group of business persons. And of course, sort of piggybacking on what you just said a moment ago, that's their largest concern. Let's, we know we got to jump through hoops. But if we could jump through hoops more efficiently and quicker, that would help streamline the process.
Time is money.
That was, that was, that was the gist of the conversation I had with these 20 or so business persons. Say, how can we do that? Can we do that? So to hear you say that sort of pricked my memory of that conversation I had with those persons. So if we could do that, it would certainly help us tremendously to not only jump through the hoops, but jump through them with some proficiency and quicker, of course. Thank you, ma'am.
So can I ask a question, I guess going back to Daniel's point of, because that, the height is not in here. So that was discussed. Is that later, or is that like, not part of the plan, but...
It's not part of the plan now because they've left it out. But it was a, it, it has been a discussion to push the outer parts to create. And we need, it needs to be addressed sooner or later, or you're not going to have some redevelopment potentials.
Is that not something like, you know, like, we get it all the time. People do a variance, um, for Five, for the Vista or something else. Is that not something that, although it's not in the plan, still someone can request?
Well, I think Krista's take on it is that it's, you know, we didn't need to be addressing that on a case-by-case basis, if, from my memory of the original discussion. So we did need some feedback on, you know, in, before we would move down that path, is it, is there a consensus about it or not? So I don't, the fact that it's not in here now, and say you all make a motion tonight to endorse this plan as we have it here, I don't think it was for, you know, we could, um, give time for that discussion to occur with whoever it needs to occur with. And then you all could just come back and add it, add it in.
I, I prefer to move forward tonight because we got folks who are looking at faces today who are waiting on us.
Because public hearings can happen for how long, did you say? If we were to add it?
Zoning public hearings happen every other month. Um, there's state requirements for public notice and those kinds of things. But with regard to a variance, um, it just, as you know, things can get tricky sometimes in that district. So we would prefer it to be as of right to where there isn't a hearing every time.
Well, that was the whole purpose of it. Because if you do have a hearing, you just add six months to every development.
So what's the process to actually get that considered and then re-propose however it's going to be?
It would go to Bowser?
Y'all, planning commission.
What did the other one go to? Planning commission?
I think you want to approve it tonight.
I want to approve it the way it is because it doesn't have the height in it. And then we'll come back after we, we'll, we'll gather the troops and get a boundary done, which I thought we had done because we spent a great deal of time marking up the, the sidewalls. And then we'll just, we'll go from there. I just, I'm not going to hold it up because we're going to lose opportunities if we don't move forward.
And we can do that at any time. And that is permanent. So it, it doesn't go away with this program expiring.
And it would go to planning commission first?
Yes. So it would be, it would be a text amendment in the map. So it, so it would go to planning commission first and then to zoning public hearing.
All right, so...
All right.
You must be sweating like a new...
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Duval, do you want to, um, talk about executive session?
Establishing...
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Development corporate...
Madam Mayor, it's a pro again. I'd like to move, we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to 30-4-78 to Development Corporations of Columbia Housing Authority, discussion of the employment of employee pursuant to 30-4-78 one, city manager and city attorney. Discussion and negotiation, and those contractual arrangements pursuant to...
We don't have number five.
Oh, dropping number five.
And then, and we dropped the first, Development Corporations.
Did you talk, did you talk to the mayor?
Okay, it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly, it's moved in second. Any discussions? Seeing none, if Ms. Hammond would read the roll.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
I have.
Aye.
Okay, it's 3:30. See, I wanted to stay...